It is 7:30. And we'd like to call the meeting to order this Thursday, September the 10th, 2020, at 7:30. And for the purpose of identification, could we have a roll call? Renee, why don't you start? That's how to picture lineup. You start, then I go second, and Katie.
Alternate.
Well, we'll do the seating later. Okay, go ahead. Okay, it's me. Peter Phyllis, Chair.
Bob Munson, Vice Chair.
Peter Mariano, Member.
And Chris Cody, Alternate.
Okay, then we're going to seat, if it's okay with everyone, we're going to seat Chris Cody and Renee as members for the evening. Okay?
Yep.
Now, just, I want to remind everyone, but just on the agenda, this is not a public hearing that we're conducting here tonight. It is simply a hearing that's open to the public to listen into. So no comments from the public will be accepted this evening. And one of the items on the agenda will actually create a public hearing 65 days from now. But once we get to that, I'll explain that. Okay? Let's see, the next step would be the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of July 23rd. I think you all received a copy of that?
Yes.
Yep.
Have you been able to read it? And if I can get a motion to accept it? If not, we'll wait until everyone had a chance to read it.
I've read it.
I read it, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't make a motion or vote.
Oh, you were not present, okay.
Not present.
I wasn't either.
Okay, well, that leaves three of us, Bob, Renee, and myself.
I make a motion to approve the minute says is.
I second the motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the exception of Peter and Christine. Okay, that takes care of that. So that brings us to new business. And this has been kind of a some gray area for a long time. Let me explain what I'm talking about. The the open space criteria, which would be the Public Act or the Public Act 490 Assessment of Open Space. And that was read into and had become part of the POCD in 2010. For that reason, everyone assumed, myself along with Jocelyn Heer, who was the advisor on this, and advised us as to what to put in, what not to put in, so on, and they finally approved it, obviously. You don't have to do it again. I mean, once you once you actually participate in 490, and is approved by the Planning Commission, and is also approved by the by the town, by the Board of Selectmen, in a town hall public hearing meeting where the entire town can participate and has approved it, we didn't think it had to go back in again. The wording in the statute is such where it says a lot of may or, but it never says has to, or it gives you almost the option. But just in case that there will be an issue, that that we, I think I just see Deidra that just came in.
Amen.
Okay, so we'll seat Deidra.
Aye.
I was just, I was in the middle of explaining the issue of that PP490.
Oh, of course.
Okay, so just let me, I'll step back a moment, just takes a second to re-explain it. That was mentioned in the Plan of Conservation Development in 2010. Deidra just disappeared. Can you still hear us, Deidra?
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I can see you.
Oh, it says I'm muted, okay.
And so now it's disappeared.
Yeah, I'm just
Listen, she's just turning off the camera.
No, I'm trying to figure out the controls. It says I'm muted, so. But I'm not muted, so.
Nope.
Okay.
No, you're not. We can hear you, we can see you, everything is great. So again, to come back to that POCD of 2010, in it, in the revision of the 2010, somebody decided that the statute would indicate that it should be mentioned in the Plan of Conservation Development. My feeling of us was, and the advisors' feeling of us was, that the POCD is not a policy document. It is simply a suggestion and a wish list of what we're trying to accomplish this time zone over the next 10 years. Having said all that, bottom line is that we were requested, and I have to agree that there could, as a gray area as to whether or not we have to mention it in the 2020 POCD or not. And so we've decided that we are going to bring it up at this meeting, for us to discuss and debate it, determine if we can approve that. And actually, this is really, it's a no-brainer, because it's a situation that was approved by the town, and removing it would be not possible, frankly. You know, so we're proposing to add into our POCD on page eight, the language that I think you do have before you, you got copied on. And that simply is that we will continue to implement the PA 490 Open Space Taxation Policy from the 2010 Town Plan to apply to the following. Any property that is residential zoned and is more than two times the required lot size in that zone. For that portion of the property that exceeds the required lot size in that zone, and however, not for any property that is used for business or utility purposes. And so that is essentially the language we're going to add to the POCD on page eight. And I think, Julie, you have that, can you bring that page up, or does everyone?
Which page again was it?
Oh, Bob.
It's not Bob.
Yeah, it was on page, that's on, actually, the language or the section we're going to put it on to is on page eight. And it simply makes reference to open space. Page eight of the current POCD. We're going to add it to that page. But that's the page where it was left off, and we didn't put it on.
It would be under goal number two.
I'm sorry?
Let me get this shared, let me see if I can get this shared now. Um. There. So under goal to sustain our historic rural town character and protect our natural resources?
Yep, that's the one.
That's page eight, so you want to add it to that?
Yeah, we're going to add it to that, and it would, can you scroll that up at all?
Yes, me.
So we can see the bottom section. We're going to put it in there. No, it simply says goal to protect priority from forest wetlands and wild wildlife corridors. And we're going to add it on the bottom of that action section, the language I just wrote earlier. It will simply say, continue to implement the PA 490 Open Space Taxation Policy from the 2010 Town Plan to apply to. And then I gave you the criteria, actually, that open space taxation has. And that is that any property that is residential zoned and is more than two times the required lot size in that zone. So if you had a four-acre zone, you could only have eight acres, you could essentially have four acres being taxed as open space, if you apply for it. But none of that, or any portion of the property that exceeds the required lot size in that zone. But it's not designed for any property that is used for business or utility purposes. So that's the language that I'm putting before the commission to approve, to be added to the current Plan of Conservation Development of 2020. Are there any questions or any thoughts or concerns? Oh, incidentally, let me just add one more step. We also have the language in the amended Plan of Conservation and Development of 2010, February 11th, and that is on page 32. Is there any way, Julie, that you can get that?
Page 32, the last of the 2020?
No, 32, you know, I just wanted to show everyone where it was in the 2010 POCD. That would be page 32 in 2010, and
This is actually, this was distributed with your agenda. This is, it says referred to 2010, page 32. This is the wording.
Okay, well, and what it also says in that section
That would be
where it says maintain Public Act 490, yeah, it says, the heading of it is, maintain Public Act 490 Assessment. And the first line of that says, continue to use the PA 490 Assessment Program and include designated open space. So essentially, we're doing nothing more than what the previous one said. It was approved, town hall meeting, et cetera. Just let me remind you that we have to follow the same procedure that we followed when we got our 2020 POCD approved. And that means that we have to set a public hearing date 65 days from now, assuming the commission approves this act that we're trying to put in there.
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If it's something that was in the POCD, that's a planning document in 2010, and it went before a public hearing and was approved, then why would it be in a 2020 planning? Because it's already been approved. It's already, people are using it. I don't, I guess I'm missing.
No, it's a good, it's a good point, and I've been talking about that for, you know, until it turned blue in my face for about seven or eight months. But the point is that the actual statute makes reference to that at any new POCD, it should be mentioned again, because that is the only area that the tax collector and tax assessor can make a definition that it was approved by the planning, by planning, and that it will be, and of course, it will be again approved by the Board of Selectmen in a public hearing that we're setting tonight, 65 days from today.
And can I just ask one more question? I was trying to look it up, but what is, is there a tax benefit to the town of Roxbury when we when we do this?
No, the benefit is to the owners of property that is in excess of, the size of the property is in excess of the required size for that zoning. If you have a 20-acre lot, and you have built one single family house on it, and you're in a four-acre zone, you could essentially call for a request, a 14-acre assessment, tax assessment on the, as open space on those 14 acres. And that's how it's been done. We have probably, I think the assessor told me that we have somewhere around 1,000 acres. Now, I could be wrong in that, but you know, we have a large amount of open space assessments in this town already.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that was, I mean, so then, so that property remains untouched by the property owner if they're receiving the tax benefit?
Correct. And the only time that change, the only time it changes, Chris, is when it gets conveyed to another party. Say they sell the property, at that point, this will be, well, actually, yeah, this will be in fact in place, and the current owners who have requested that open space assessment, based on the criteria set forth in the statute, they will have to benefit off that taxation until they sell the property to a new owner. And then they, of course, can come back to the town and ask the same thing, unless they have plans on doing more with the property than than this current owner, because once you have the property assessed as an open space, you cannot do anything with it.
So do we have a way of, like, how is that monitored? Because it could be a lot of property that we're talking about. How do we know they're not doing anything with it? I mean, I'm not trying to be devil's advocate, but like, if I have 100 acres and I'm declaring whatever the maximum percentage is, how do I know, or anybody in town, know that they're not clearing or putting a building up? How do we, I mean, because
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind that most open spaces that are being taxed as open space, there's more detailed criteria in the statute. And we have the right to monitor, we have the right to check to see that no one does something contrary to the requirements. However, we don't have, we don't have the setup to do that. Now, one could say that, we could say to a tax assessor that every time someone applies for an open space assessment, that we would like to know about it. But if every time somebody applies for it, somebody from the Planning Commission, or there has to be a system set up that would require us to go out and check that before it's approved. And that hasn't been done in 10 years. So you're the commission, and all of your questions, I think, are excellent. They're right to the point. And the point is that it's essentially unchecked. You know, it could create an issue where a lot of land gets pulled off the tax roll, or has a diminished tax benefit to the town, but certainly has a tax benefit, a positive tax benefit to the owners of the property. And that's what, and that statute was designed for that. So if you have land that you don't use, you should be paying for that land as regular acreage on your property. So that statute says that you have to allow that to happen. I mean, the statute is for that. And we've accepted that in 2010, when we actually decided and voted on, as a town, to accept the 490 Assessment Strategy for Open Space.
If I could just say two things. One, to the note of, how do we know that it's not being used? Is if the person decided to put up a structure or a building of some sort, then they wouldn't have permits. Because if they came to pull permits to build or construct something, then
That would be the time, that would be the time where you would actually catch it. I mean, for someone to do something entirely illegal and just go and do it, there's hardly any protection against that, you know. However, we could file cease and desist orders, and it goes through a whole legal process if somebody would actually violate the regulations as they stand in the statute. You know, what it means is, it says you cannot use it for anything else, it's just open space. And some of the other criterias are that open space can also be areas of wetlands. It can be areas of where there are species of, I don't know, birds, frogs, deer, or whatever, that live on that open space. It could be areas that actually beautify the they have an aesthetic value to the beauty of the property, you know, those kind of things, you know, and actually benefit the
If someone has a PA 490 open space and they want to farm on it, they can become a PA 490 for farmlands, can't they?
Yeah, no, they probably could, but then you would have to assess it a different way. I mean, farmland and forest land is automatic. We do have an assessment for that, we don't even have to approve that. However
One other point, I was, I was working with a couple in Newtown, and they were purchasing a parcel that had a 490 designation on it already, and if I'm, is it a state program, correct? Because I know in Newtown, you could remove, Peter, you said the property stays in 490 until it is sold. As far as I understood, in Newtown, you could, with a tax liability, pull it out of designated 490, but there were certain time windows that you had to, you know
You have to keep it for 10 years?
A new owner certainly could reapply and have that same tax status, but it would be under new ownership.
Right, but there was a way for new owners to purchase with it under tax, you know, P90, but then pull property out of P90 for something future. And I think there was a, again, a tax liability or something that went along with that.
Right.
Yeah, you're 100% right. That could also be done. Yeah, that could also be done. And again, it's a monetary issue, it's also, and again, if that, if that open space was originally, or originally demonstrated that it has, say, wetlands on it, complete wetlands, has other issues of wildlife that lives on that area, and that was the reason for having it taxed as open space. Now, then you have other agencies would get involved. Once you take over the property, and it's all on wetlands, you certainly now have to comply with all wetlands regulations, so on. You know, if that's possible, sure, you could probably take it out of 490, and then have a tax liability of, and I'm not quite sure how they would assess that. In terms of retroactive, I'm not sure. I'm not totally certain as to how that, how that activity works, but it can be done.
Okay.
And I think Peter, it's my understanding that if you go into a PA 490, you have to keep it as a PA 490 for 10 years. You could transfer the property, but if you pull it, if either the original owner or the new owner pulls it out 10 years or under, then they will have to pay the back taxes that would have been owed if it wasn't a PA
After 10 years, yeah, you're correct.
After 10 years, if there's no liability.
Yeah, you're correct. But also lies, you know, forest land and farmland have a different designation in terms of taxing, taxation. You know, that's a perpetuity, and it continues as you pass it on to whoever. As long as they keep it as forest land and as farmland. But on forest land, for example, the minute you cut down a tree within that forest land designated area, you lose that benefit. Maybe, Bob, have you, is there anything that you could add to that?
Not really.
So we're pretty much, we're pretty much on target, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Anybody else, any concerns, thoughts? For or against? We can listen to it?
Yeah, I make a motion. I mean, I think that that 490 designation, if you have a large parcel, it's probably hard for the town to make sure that you're not creating some sort of, you know, recreational vehicle trail on that, if it's done on a small scale and possibly cutting down trees. But, you know, large tree clearing doesn't go unnoticed, and so, yeah, I mean, if it was in 2010, I'm, it's
Exactly, Peter. You know, what's really happening is, in most cases, it's the adjacent property owners who generally bring that to our attention. You know, if something happens like that, and you have an adjacent property owner, certainly have a lot of tree cutting going on and activities. In addition to, if there's someone that, and we have to say that 95% of all people certainly living in this town, they would adhere to certain regulations in terms of applying for building permit, applying for an excavation permit, going through the process, going to wetlands, wetland zoning and planning. So that's, that would certainly trigger the process of determining as to what they can or cannot do in that land, and whether it's approved or not.
Uh, well
Peter, are you making a motion?
Excuse me, and sorry, excuse me, one minute before you make your motion. Peter, you have one person too many seated. Would you like to unseat somebody, since you seated Deidra? Because you have both
Yeah, we seated everyone before Deidra came on, online, so I'm sorry, Deidra. We have to temporarily unseat you.
Fine.
Okay. Your comments are certainly noted, and they were all right on point, so was everyone else's, you know, I do appreciate it. Okay, well, then do I hear a motion to accept the addition of the continuation of PP490 as it appeared in the Plan of Conservation of Development in 2010?
I'll make a motion to that.
Do I hear a second on that?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have to go to the second step on that. Now that we have approved this, we have to now have a meeting or a public hearing date scheduled 65 days from today. Julie, we have a date for that, don't we?
We do. It's November 18th, which is a Wednesday night.
Okay. So that would be the day, that would be exactly 65 days at which we would have a public hearing on that matter. And again, it's been around for 10 years. What I will, if it's okay with everyone else, now we approved it, and we are the only commission that's named in terms of having to approve this, and then it has to become a town hearing. But it is to the benefit of all occupants with properties of that size. But I will advise, we should advise as a commission, that the tax assessor should continue to do what she has done in the last 10 years prior to that 65-day public hearing. And if there's, if there's, I sound long shot, a great outcry at the public hearing, of course, and we go back and have to retroactive, and if the Planning Commission agrees with that, we have to go retroactive back to to that time period, from now until 65 days where action was taken. I'm not quite sure how the procedure would work, but it's highly unlikely that would happen. I just want to bring it up to your attention that, you know, that 65 days is the same amount of time that we had to plan the public hearing that we planned when we had the 2020 POCD all finished and we had adopted it. And at that point, it went to a public hearing 65 days from that day.
So we do the public hearing on the same day as the meeting?
Yes, well, yeah, we can I think, Julie, didn't we, when we talked about it today, did we say that we should have the
Unfortunately
When is our regular meeting?
Unfortunately, the regular meeting is the 12th of November, which is before that date. So the conversation was to cancel that meeting, and then go to a public hearing on Wednesday, November 18th, with a special meeting to follow.
Okay, so we have, essentially, we're going to have our Planning Commission meeting and the public hearing simultaneously. In 10 months.
Good to me.
Okay, so going to get a motion to approve that public hearing date?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, do I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, now, the last thing that we have on our agenda is notification from the CAG of proposed subdivision in Southbury within 500 feet of Roxbury border. And we also have given you a, what has happened is that when there is someone that applies for a subdivision approval in a town that is closer than, is within 500 feet of the adjacent town, that goes to the, to the CAG for their with a comment and review, and we can comment and review also, but no one ever does. It's the same thing as if you send out a subdivision, notice of subdivision to, in our town, to all people that surround that property within 500 feet. Same thing. We don't have to comment on it, it's just for notification purposes. The perspective is of all people that I ever talked to, and, you know, and what they're saying is, we don't have to comment on it, they're just notifying us. But if you want to comment on it, and if there's some disturbing element about this particular subdivision as far as Roxbury is concerned, you know, but there isn't, and that property is located down on the corner of 172 and 67. If you go down 172, in some ways, it's that it's that, actually, it's at the toe of the Brownson Mountain area. So, and it's accessible through 67, an area that is about 500 feet away from the Roxbury border. So, and again, it's notification, no matter what we say or do, they're going to, they're going to have to go through the and there's also a planning meeting date for that particular subdivision approval. So they have to go through all the process of Roxbury's of Southbury's agencies to get it approved, the way we would do if you had a subdivision approved in our town. Now, if we were to have a subdivision that's planned within 500 feet of Rox, of Southbury, we would go and present that to the CAG. They would then notify all surrounding towns that we're doing They would then notify all surrounding towns that we're doing this. End of story. So it's just communication purposes, unless somebody wants to make comments on it, and we send it into them to, you know, pro, for, against, it wouldn't do anything other than the fact that they're advising us they're doing it. And it's going to get approved whether or not we say we don't like it, as long as it is within the criteria of their particular land use policy. So I've told you what we have before us, and unless somebody is really anxious to say they don't like it, and, you know, we go and invade Southbury, I'm only kidding.
Yeah. I'd just leave it alone.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's, that's my thought. No, I tell you, nobody is very commended upon it.
It's seven houses, it's not a, not a, not like it's a major traffic impact anyway to Route 67.
No, it, it isn't. And, and again, that is something to decide for Southbury, not for us. You know, and, and I mean, we could say that that subdivision is going to have a great impact on traffic coming from Southbury, after coming from Roxbury into Southbury, or from Southbury into Roxbury, and therefore, we're just putting them on notice that, you know, we have a problem with that. We can actually go and take part of the public hearing for that, for the approval process of the Southbury subdivision. We can do that. We could be there, we could, you know, voice our, our concerns, but nobody ever has done that, and, you know, unless somebody really feels totally uncomfortable and has a really gigantic reason as to why that should not happen, and why they should not go through the process with Southbury and have it approved based on whatever their criteria is, I don't think it's pointless to actually comment on it, but that's entirely up to the commission to tell me that, that you would like to do that. If not, it's just for information purposes.
Yeah, I don't know, I think.
Okay, well, in that case, then I'll, I'll make a motion to not to comment on this situation and, and accept it as notification only. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I can't believe it, but I think, I think we wrapped it up. Unless there are any other concerns or thoughts or comments to make in reference to our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Again.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. It was a pleasure seeing you, as opposed to just hearing you. And so let's hope we can, it's going to be a time again where we're going to actually see each other in person again, which probably won't happen until third quarter in 2022 or not at all. Okay, everybody, any questions at all? If not?
Peter?
Yes?
Peter, has Maxine found a place to live?
Yes, she has.
Oh, good.
Yes, she has. No, she is, in fact, I just talked to her today. Right now, they bought a house in Bristol. But the house will not be ready until the middle of October, so currently they're living in a hotel, in a hotel, and their daughter is with, with relation.
Oh, okay.
So no, everything, everything is fine. It was, it was a heavy lift by some people, but we got it done.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I wish you good night, everyone, and nice seeing you.
Good to see you.
Good night, everybody.